Go to the center podium and make some presentations. So we would like to ask attention for this very important presentation. Councilmember Jan Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know what to call you. I'll just call you Tom Lavange.
You call me Tom.
I'll call you Tom. Okay, Dee Allen. Dee Allen is Executive Director of the Environmental Affairs Department. And today, we are celebrating a little bit early. Earth Day, which is coming this Friday, April the 22nd. The protection, restoration, and enhancement of the environment of the city of Los Angeles is vital to the quality of all of our residents, workers, and visitors to our beautiful city. The quality of the environment of the city is key to its economic growth and prosperity. As a city, we have all worked together towards environmental justice, a struggle for a clean and safe environment, excuse me, regardless of race, class, or economic status. Environmental industries such as clean vehicles, recycled products, and pollution control technologies are one of the targeted growth sectors of the Southern California economy and will provide numerous new jobs and economic development for Los Angeles while working to protect and improve our environment. Each year, people from around our nation join together to recognize and celebrate the importance of such efforts during Earth Day and throughout the entire month of April. This year marks the 35th anniversary of the first Earth Day on April the 22nd, 1970. With thousands of concerned individuals and numerous community, environmental, business, and ethnic organizations throughout the city, there will be sponsored events and opportunities to participate in environmental cleanups, restoration, and education events during April in recognition of Earth Month. So it's an honor to present this resolution recognizing Earth Day in the city of Los Angeles. It is a great opportunity for everyone in the city to learn more about environmental issues in recognition of the importance of protecting and improving our environment. And I'm going to also take this opportunity to recognize the men and women who've gathered here today from across our city. They are here because with the help of neighborhood organizations and council offices, they have been identified as local friends and champions of the environment by our Environmental Affairs Department. Now, I'm going to just present this to Dee for a few minutes, and then we're going to bring our awardees to the front for recognition. Okay, Dee Allen.
First, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Jan Perry for her leadership, her support, and her keen insight on environmental issues and really recognizing how to get to Dee, what is the real issue here. And so I really appreciate that support. We also have my Environmental Affairs Commission sitting right here, and I want to appreciate their support as they helped me in terms of developing environmental programs for the city of Los Angeles. So if my commissioners could stand, give them a hand. This morning, we're pleased to present and honor a group of outstanding community members. Assembled here are community residents, business owners, and representatives from local environmental organizations and agencies, all being recognized for their hard work and commitment to enhance Los Angeles. Residents have volunteered their time on tree planting projects and community cleanups. Businesses have reduced pollution by purchasing clean equipment and working with us to clean and revitalize contaminated properties. Community and environmental organizations have worked diligently to make positive changes in their neighborhoods across Los Angeles. And local agencies have improved their services to clean and protect our air, land, and water. Please join me to celebrate the work as I read the names of the individuals and organizations that we are honoring here today. Audubon, California. You want to stand? Bayona Creek Watershed Task Force. Alvin Blain, General Manager of General Services Department. George Buckman. Brentwood Green. Lucille Chicharina, I'm sorry. Citizens Community to Save Elysian Park. Crenshaw Christian Center Community Task Force. Terry Davis. Delray Cleaners. Come on up, Terry. Mike Dobie, Dobry. Ron Emmler. Larry Frazier. Garrett Swig. Brent Green. Hill the Bay. Historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council. Emily Johnson. Koreatown Youth and Community Center. Los Angeles Conservation Corps. Los Angeles All Bird and Education Center. Northeast Trees. Perkorma Beautiful. Mary Padilla. Reagan. San Pedro and Peninsula Homeowners United. Helen Speck. South Los Angeles Beautification Team. Sunset Boulevard Laundry and Cleaners. Sunny Bright Natural Cleaners. Sun Valley Rotary Club. United Neighborhoods Neighborhood Council. Erwin and Lula Washington. And the Lobby Kobe. Did I get it right? So please take an opportunity to give a hand to all of our awardees today.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to go in the back and take a big picture. And if any of the councilmembers want to be photographed with their groups, please join us in the back.
Great, thank you, thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Garcetti for a few comments, and I know he has another presentation to follow.
Just very quickly, thank you, Ms. Perry, for being such an environmental champion and having so much of the city's environmental champions here today. I wanted to especially just thank the Citizens Committee to Save Elysian Park and to say something very brief in memory of Ron Emmler, who is not with us today. He's being honored posthumously because he passed away earlier this year but was an incredible activist and understood that environmentalism means as much as cleaning up trash on the street as it meant preserving a park nearby. And really was somebody who just gave of his life, literally, so much to not just Echo Park but the entire city of Los Angeles. And I know Ron is smiling down on us right now, and I'm so happy that folks are here from Echo Park to honor his memory. But thank you, Ms. Perry, for honoring him too.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I wanted to just stand up as well and acknowledge all of you, as well as Garrett Swig from my Valley Glen community, who has been so active in planting trees and making our neighborhood a better place. And Earth Day, I mean, I remember the first Earth Day that people kind of went, oh, those are crazy environmentalists, you know? And now Earth Day has become everybody talks about it because our future is about saving our earth, preserving our earth, taking care of the environment. And so each one of you, in your own special way, has made a difference in the city. And then I know that we are going to see across the city on Earth Day and every day of the year, a focus and attention on improving our environment and doing it each person knowing that they can make a difference just by not throwing their trash, by cleaning up their neighborhoods, by planting trees, whatever it may be. And so I just wanted to stand and say thank you to all of you for being here today and for Ms. Perry for your leadership and Dee for the Environmental Affairs Department taking quite a lead role in this. Congratulations to all of you.
Mr. Lavange.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Thank all of you for getting your hands dirty. Getting your hands dirty but getting in the soil. Thank Jan Perry for being the great leader for our council on this issue. Give Jan a great hand. And Dee, I was thinking when I was sitting up there at the president's chair, I was thinking, Alex, as we started this meeting 35 years ago, and I remember the word ecology. You know, that was the first word that really kind of started out and thought it could be the Department of Ecology instead of Environmental Affairs. But you've had an affair, each and every one of you, with this great land, Los Angeles. And that's so important to have it because you know what? A hundred years from now, your work will still be there because those trees that Terry Davis planted in Toluca Lake will still be there. The work at San Pedro that you do will still be there as the gateway to Los Angeles. The work in Echo Park and the valley and the west side and Brentwood, where's Ms. Brentwood? Barbara, good to see you and all your trees. She's been planting trees for so wonderful. So you really have made an impact that's going to last beyond our lifetimes to the next lifetime. There's a tree in Griffith Park, and it's called the One Mile Tree. And there's a plaque there, believe it or not, at the bottom. It was implanted by an organization in 1915. And why they call it a One Mile Tree? One mile from Las Vegas Boulevard up the trail. And it's kind of interesting how things work that way. Simple things make big differences. You've made great differences. Thank you very much on behalf of all the people today in Los Angeles and all the people in the future because you are the future by improving the environment today. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Ms. Perry, thank you for pulling this together. I'd just like to acknowledge the three organizations in the 8th District, the Crenshaw Christian Center, Ms. Amos is right there, and then also Lula Washington on Crenshaw. I don't see her here. And then also Mr. Green, who works between the 8th and the 10th District in tree planting. We just want to say thank you for what you do. Vermont Avenue has never looked better, and we also agree with you that we should continue to work towards that $100 million office building that hopefully will be there to keep that development going. And then the environmental and brownfield services that Mrs. Washington has done on revitalizing a site on Crenshaw. And we can't have enough trees. And so just want to say thank you to Mr. Green. So appreciate what you're doing, just keep up the good work.
Thank you very much, and again, congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I also want to acknowledge the presence of Noreen McLendon, who is another Commissioner on the Environmental Affairs Commission. And thank you for coming today. And just a special recognition of the South Los Angeles Beautification Team, the Conservation Corps, and also thank you again to the Crenshaw Christian Center for all you do for South Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, let me just acknowledge Nobelia Coob. I called her name, but I don't think she heard me. So she's on this, and we want to make sure that she's there. Nobelia? Nobelia? Is she here? There he is.
Okay. For our next presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Garcetti. Mr. Lavange.
And Ava will wait there and walk everybody through the queue.
Step back, hope is that they let these folks through there.
Audubon, California. You want to stand? We'll call you. Yeah, we got like, yeah. Bayona Creek Watershed Task Force. Alvin Blain, General Manager of General Services Department. George Buckman. Brentwood Green. Lucille Chacharina, I'm sorry. Citizens Committee to Save Elysian Park. Crenshaw Christian Center Community Task Force. Terry Davis. Del Ray Cleaners. Come on up, Terry. Mike Dobie, Dobry. Ron Emmler. Larry Frazier. Garrett Gudswig. Brent Green. Hilda Bay. Historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council. Emily Johnson. Correa Town Youth and Community Center. Los Angeles Conservation Corps. Los Angeles All Bird and Education Center. Northeast Trees. Pecorma Beautiful. Mary Padilla. Ri- Reagan. San Pedro and Peninsula Homeowners United. Helen Speck. South Los Angeles Beautification Team. Sunset Boulevard Laundry and Cleaners. Sunny Bright Natural Cleaners. Sun Valley Rotary Club. United Neighborhoods Neighborhood Council. Erwin and Lula Washington. And the Lobby Kobe. Did I get it right? Okay. So, please take an opportunity to give a hand to all of our awardees today.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to go in the back and take a big picture, and if any of the council members want to be photographed with their groups, please join us in the back.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Garcetti for a few comments, and I know he has another presentation to follow.
Just very quickly, thank you, Ms. Perry, for being such an environmental champion and having so much of the city's environmental champions here today. I wanted to especially just thank the Citizens Committee to Save Elysian Park and to say something very brief for, in memory of Ron Emmler, who is not with us today. He's being honored posthumously because he passed away earlier this year but was an incredible activist and understood that environmentalism means as much as cleaning up trash on the street as it meant preserving a park nearby. And really was somebody who just gave of his life, literally, so much to not just Echo Park but the entire city of Los Angeles. And I know Ron is smiling down on us right now, and I'm so happy that folks are here from Echo Park to honor his memory, but thank you, Ms. Perry, for honoring him too.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I wanted to just stand up as well and acknowledge all of you, as well as Garrett Gudswig from my Valley Glen community, who has been so active in planting trees and making our neighborhood a better place. And Earth Day, I mean, I remember the first Earth Day that people kind of went, oh, those are crazy environmentalists, you know? And now Earth Day has become, everybody talks about it because our future is about saving our earth, preserving our earth, taking care of the environment. And so each one of you, in your own special way, has made a difference in the city and that I know that we are going to see across the city on Earth Day and every day of the year, a focus and attention on improving our environment and doing it, each person knowing that they can make a difference, just by not throwing their trash, by cleaning up their neighborhoods, by planting trees, whatever it may be. And so I just wanted to stand and say thank you to all of you for being here today and for Ms. Perry for your leadership and, D, for the Environmental Affairs Department taking quite a lead role in this. Congratulations to all of you.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Thank all of you for getting your hands dirty. Getting your hands dirty but getting in the soil. Thank Jan Perry for being the great leader for our council on this issue. Give Jan a great hand. And, D, I was thinking when I was sitting up there at the president's chair, I was thinking, Alex, as we started this meeting 35 years ago, and I remember the word ecology, you know, that was the first word that really kind of started out and thought it could be the Department of Ecology instead of Environmental Affairs. But you've had an affair, each and every one of you, with this great land, Los Angeles, and that's so important to have it because, you know what? 100 years from now, your work will still be there because those trees that Terry Davis planted in Toluca Lake will still be there. The work in San Pedro that you do will still be there as the gateway to Los Angeles. The work in Echo Park and the valley and the west side and Brentwood. Where's Ms. Brentwood? Barbara, good to see you and all your trees. She's been planting trees for so wonderful. So you really have made an impact that's going to last beyond our lifetimes to the next lifetime. There's a tree in Griffith Park, and it's called the One Mile Tree. And there's a plaque there, believe it or not, at the bottom. It was implanted by an organization in 1915. And why they call it a One Mile Tree? One mile from Las Feliz Boulevard up the trail. And it's kind of interesting how things work that way. Simple things make big differences. You've made great differences. Thank you very much on behalf of all the people today in Los Angeles and all the people in the future because you are the future by improving the environment today. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Ms. Perry, thank you for pulling this together. I'd just like to acknowledge the three organizations in the 8th District, the Crenshaw Christian Center, Ms. Amos is right there, and then also Lula Washington on Crenshaw. I don't see her here. And then also Mr. Green, who works between the 8th and the 10th District in tree planting. We just want to say thank you for what you do. Vermont Avenue has never looked better, and we also agree with you that we should continue to work towards that $100 million office building that hopefully will be there to keep that development going. And then the environmental and brownfield services that Mrs. Washington has done on revitalizing a site on Crenshaw. And we can't have enough trees, and so just want to say thank you to Mr. Green. So appreciate what you're doing, just keep up the good work.
Thank you very much, and again, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I also want to acknowledge the presence of Noreen McLendon, who is another commissioner on the Environmental Affairs Commission, and thank her for coming today. And just a special recognition of the South Los Angeles Beautification Team, the Conservation Corps, and also thank you again, the Crenshaw Christian Center, for all you do for South Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, let me just acknowledge Nobelia Coob. I called her name, but I don't think she heard me, so she's on this, and we want to make sure that she's there. Nobelia? Nobelia? Okay. Is she here? There he is. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. For our next presentation, let me recognize Councilmember Garcetti.
Take a picture? Yeah, we'll come through here, come around, and then we'll all...
Mr. Labange.
And Ava will wait there and walk everybody through the... Which way are we going?
That way.
Hi. Good to see you too. Sure you're doing well? Thank you.
Congratulations.
We're going to get pictures of people.
Of council, we have very special guests today here. 15 students from a program called the Regional Occupational Program, students from various schools in the county, including Culver City, Beverly Hills, Santa Monica, San Marino, and Agura High School, not to mention Calabasas. Aviva Monacy is a great educator. And I had a chance to brief the students earlier, and who was the young man who answered my question right, right there? Come up here right now. We sat in the back of the chambers, and I started to talk to them, Mr. Smith, about our jobs and what we do, and I asked him, where do you think I used to be? And this young man got the question right. I used to be a student. I used to be a student. I was part of what Wendy Grul was, what Ed Reyes was, what our late, former colleague, excuse me for saying late, our colleague Mark Ridley Thomas was, a member of the Youth Council for Tom Bradley. And all these young people are down here, students from Los Angeles County, ambassadors, and I wanted to officially welcome them to the city council...
You ready to make a quick speech?
And give them all a big hand.
Thank you. We're going to take a picture in a minute, okay? Good. Now, sit down right here. Sit down right here.
And also, Mr. President, if I may...
Renee, come in the picture. Come in the picture. Come in the picture. We're going to take a picture. Okay, good. You're going to go there?
There's nothing better, wait a second, Renee, there's nothing better in the world than staff. Staff who could help you. And right behind me, here's one of the greatest helpers of all city council history. Renee Weitzer, please give her a hand. 25 years of service to the city. Started her job as a, and she gave me counsel today. She was very much involved in a president of the Encino Homeowners Association. She fought then the proposal to bring Hollywood Park Racetrack from Inglewood to Sepulveda. At the same time, although she was working with Peter Yuboroff to try to resolve issues related to Sepulveda, which ultimately rejected any Olympic venues, she thought to empower and strengthen Sepulveda Basin as a park and recreation area. Through her time, she then worked to work for Joel Wax as a planning deputy, and then worked for the late, great John Farrar as his planning deputy. And I was so fortunate to have her on my staff as a planning deputy, and as you know, the assisted zoo director for the Los Angeles Zoo, so she's constantly involved with that. And I got a little note from the city clerk the other day, and the city clerk gave me that note, and he said, Renee Weitzer, you've now served the city 25 years, and you get a 25-year pin.
Oh, my God.
So, by the power invested in me, I hereby present this 25-year pill in to one of the greatest deputies of all. Look at the city hall. She didn't even know she was getting this here. She had her city hall. That's how dedicated Renee Weitzer is. And I can't tell you how important, as you all know, planning and land use issues are, and Renee is able to bring groups together. And we thank you and your leadership and your committee for the help when we come before you, but try to solve the issues before they get to be contentious. And Renee, this pin is for you as well as this great seal of the city of Los Angeles, seconded by Sidney Misakowski, who you had lunch with every day when you were both deputies, believe it or not. Members, please give Renee Weitzer a great hand.
You want to say that?
No.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Tom. I just wanted to take a moment while they take their picture to thank Renee for all her hard work. It's true, Tom, it's always great when the committee can just flow, when we knock out the items and everybody's in consent item. And every once in a while, we come across some very difficult issues, and Renee has been, I believe, one of the role models for all the future planners that work with various issues that are so complicated. But this is a moment for us to thank all our staff, especially those who are dealing with these land use planning issues because they work many, many hours, they're in the trenches, they deal with all the emotional factors that are out there, and thank you, Renee, for being there and working with you since the early 90s. It's been great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Stand up for Renee. Give her a big hand.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and congratulations, Renee. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vivergos, Sine, Padilla, 11 members present and accorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. We do have one more presentation for today, but before we turn back to that, let's at minimum dispense with consent items. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves, and Ms. Grul seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Ludlow moves, and Mr. Labange seconds.
Mr. President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Let's consent with, excuse me, dispense with consent items first.
On the regular agenda, items noted for public hearing. Item number one is an alley vacation in Council District 9, and if there are no protests, the city council should instruct the city engineer to proceed with the vacation.
Okay. Members, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. Public hearings open and closed. No protests. We have the recommendation before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number two is also a public hearing item. It's an alley vacation in Council District Number 1, and again, if there are no protests, council may instruct the city engineer to proceed.
And again, without request from members of the public to address the council on item number two, public hearings open and closed. We just got some. Let's call item two special to hear from members of the public. Next item.
Item number three is also a public hearing item. It's an alley, excuse me, a street vacation in Council District 5, and again, if there are no protests, council can instruct the city engineer to proceed.
Okay. On item number three, we don't have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open and closed. A request to call item three special, seeing none. Let's open the roll and the recommendation, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items four through 18. Item number four is a confirmation of a commissioner. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold item four on the desk temporarily, and we'll take item four up as soon as we dispense with consent items. The balance of items five through 18, colleagues, public hearings have been held on these items in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. Request for specials, beginning with Mr. Zine.
Number 12.
12, call special by Mr. Zine. Any other specials? Any other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 19 through 41. 10 votes are required for consideration.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials? Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been advised by the CLA's office that I have to call 39 special because I have a substitute motion. It was just regarding the wording of the use of the Tom Bradley room, so it's non-controversial, which is a technical correction.
You want to make that amendment verbally, and we'll take it up now?
Well, it's actually going around right now.
Okay. Then we'll call it special and wait for it to be circulated. Any other specials, 19 through 41? Mr. Parks.
Yes, a special on number 29 and also 36.
Okay. 36, call special by Mr. Parks, as well as 29, which is, actually relates to item 44, a closed session item on today's agenda. So we can take those matters concurrently. Any other specials? 19 through 41? Any other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Items 19 through 24 are ordinances and do carry over for second readings. Next items, please.
Number 40, forthwith.
Fourthwith on number 40.
Next items are closed session items 42, 43, and 4040. Wish to hold those on the desk.
Let's hold those on the desk for executive session. Let's take up item number four at this time.
And item number four is confirmation of Greg Maitre to the board of the LAXT.
And if you would come forward at this time. Thank you for joining us, colleagues. We do have a committee report recommending confirmation of our nominee. Members of the council wishing to speak on this item, beginning with Mr. Cardenas.
Good morning. Good morning, council members, Angelinos. I just wanted to share with you some of the comments that we had in the Commerce Committee on this appointment to LAXT. Greg, once again, thank you so much for volunteering your time. This is not a paid position. You're going to be spending a lot of time talking to people about legal matters, about lease issues, things of that nature. This is a very tangled issue, and we do welcome the fact that you've already started to get educated on this issue. I just would like you to share with the Angelinos a little bit about, you know, what you do and why you decided to volunteer your time to be on this important commission.
You're welcome. Thank you. My name, once again, is Greg Maitre. I'm a resident of Rancho Palos Verdes. I grew up in the San Pedro and the port area. I've been a longshoreman for 20 years. I'm a licensed U.S. Coast Guard captain. I also have a tankman's endorsement to load and unload dangerous cargoes and fuels. I understand the circumstances surrounding the city getting involved with LAXT, and that's one of the reasons that I feel that I'm qualified to sit on the board of LAXT, Los Angeles Export Terminal, and look forward to trying to, you know, help the city and help the residents and the community and the people who work on the port, you know, work a solution out to LAXT and do the best I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. I'd also like to mention that we really do appreciate here in the city your willingness to get involved in this very important issue. That site is very integral in the success of the entire port, and it's good to know that with your expertise of having been a lifelong resident in the surrounding community, having to deal with the environment of the port and being sensitive to that, and also knowing the day-to-day workings of how a port operates, when you talk about walking the docks every single day, and also knowing a lot about what the shipping industry has to deal with, being that you have that license and you have that experience. So I think you're very well qualified for this, and once again, thank you so much for volunteering your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Other council members? Mr. Labange.
Greg, thank you very much for your service. I appreciate it, and your expertise and background in the Coast Guard certainly is going to only help be able to make the great decisions that you'll have to make in the future. So I just wanted to thank you on behalf of Janice Han, who's in Sacramento today, fighting for other issues up in Sacramento.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on confirmation, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your service to the city. Let's send that item forthwith, please. Next item.
Mr. President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Let's take up general public comment, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda, and the council will call forward at this time. Bill Hui, followed by Dr. Daniel Weisman, Tessa Maxwell, and Maria Rodriguez.
Good morning, members of city council. My name is Bill Hui. I do public relations for a nightclub called the Florentine Gardens in Hollywood. The reason I'm here is, at the present time, the city's going through the eminent domain process against this nightclub, and what it is, is this is a famous landmark that was built in 1938. It had a lot of celebrity events going on in the '30s, '40s, and '50s, and it's the last nightclub still in operation from Hollywood's golden age. All the other nightclubs are going, and this is part of what attracts tourists to LA. Now, we did some research, and we found that in 1986, the city of LA passed a redevelopment plan voted on by city council and signed by Mayor Bradley at the time, that was called the Hollywood Redevelopment Program. And this plan was to save Hollywood buildings from being overdeveloped, from being destroyed, and losing landmarks. Here we have the last remaining nightclub from that era, and the city has decided they want the property, and they're moving against the club for eminent domains, and I think we're killing off some of our heritage, we're killing off some of the magic of Hollywood, and I think it could affect the overall tourism because there aren't that many landmarks left, and I think we should, if, we should be consistent, you know, the city should not be tearing down landmarks at this time that city council years ago, with Mayor Bradley, decided are worth saving. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Dr. Daniel Weisman, and I represent a number of neighborhood councils. I want to start by adding my thanks to many of the others who thanked all of you members of council for your real diplomacy, and specifically Mr. Cardenas for some real, a real display of manliness on his discussion of the Department of Water and Power, MOU. We're very pleased that it has passed. It went before committee, the Education and Neighborhoods Committee. Shall I pause for a minute?
Thank you very much.
I'm not quite done, but I did think that it might be well if my voice could be heard. Thank you. It went before the E&amp;N Committee and had a very thorough discussion, Mr. Cardenas. I hope it will satisfy any questions that you had before, and if not, there are many of us who are standing ready to answer all those questions. There are several issues that I thought were on the agenda last Friday that I didn't see here. I understand that you're considering the establishment of a commission for the purposes of surveying the hospital closures in this city. I've been a member of 17 hospitals in the San Fernando Valley at one time. Don't ask why and don't ask how many hospital dues I had to pay because of that, but I saw the following hospitals close, many of which I was a member of the staff. Pecorma Memorial Lutheran Hospital, West Park Hospital, Canoga Park Hospital, Panorama City Hospital, which fortunately has reopened as Mission Hospital, as you know full well, Mr. President, and you had an important hand in getting it done. Thank you for that. North Hollywood Hospital, sometimes called Riverside Hospital, or the Tarzana Medical Center at North Hollywood, and most recently, the hospital closest to my home, Valley Hospital. That's six, seven hospitals, and this is not just true of the valley, it is true of every part of this city. I certainly would like to see you put somebody in the position of watching these things, finding out why they are happening, hopefully talking to those people who can find out what we can do to prevent these important services from being taken away from our communities. We in the valley now have two, three trauma centers, Holy Cross, Valley Press, Tarzana. We had five. This is not just true of the valley, but the same constriction of trauma centers, emergency departments, neonatal ICUs, adult ICUs is constricting so much. You know full well the problem at Martin Luther King Hospital, and that is particularly tragic. As a former 10-year employee of the county hospital in the Big General, I was very interested in and concerned about Martin Luther King. Rancho Las Amigos Hospital, our most important resource for rehabilitation of severely ill mental and neurological orthopedic defects, is threatened severely, and these are severe losses for our community. Yes, these are county-funded, state-funded, federally-funded things, but we in the city are the people who live there too, and we must, I think, take part of it. Just like you've been advocating for an interaction between the city and the LAUSD, the, all of these departments, all of these jurisdictions, I think, have to develop communications between one another.
If I can ask you to conclude, please, we have other speakers waiting.
Thank you. There are so many other things I wish I had the opportunity to talk about. I thought the Ridley Thomas 1314 AB that was now in committee in the state legislature would be discussed here. I know it will be soon. I want to thank those members of this council who have taken a strong role, Mr. Labange, Mr. Zine, Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Han, others, in trying to modify the Brown Act in such a way that it will affect and be reasonable for our neighborhood councils to work with. That legislation needs a lot more discussion. I bring it to your attention and hope we'll have the chance to discuss it further in the near future. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. With Tessa Maxwell, followed by Maria Rodriguez.
Good morning, council members. My name is Tessa Maxwell, and I'm a resident of CDA and founder of, and CEO and CFO of DeWalta Parquet Arts Recreation Project, and I am now officially an intern for City Hall. I'm now officially an intern for City Hall. It's the building and developing, if you don't remember, it's the building and developing of a multicultural visual performing art institute and art park, a free after-school program that operates till 10:00 p.m., an outreach program geared towards the needs of Latino and African-American youth who join gangs, especially in the CDA area. I have an investor. I have an investor, and that is holding the property on the corner of 11th and 54th, and I'd like to thank Councilman Jan Perry for the meeting that I attended this morning for IDA to get a bond for the empowerment zone, for financing, and to thank Councilman Cardina and Councilman Martin Ludo for what they're doing for their youth and their communities, and to ask for any guidance that would help me to get this project underway, because this is my fifth year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Maria Rodriguez.
Good morning.
Mi nombre es Maria Rodriguez. Yo represento a Central Farmers, de la Corantuno y Alameda.
My name is Maria Rodriguez. I represent South Central Farmers on 41st and Alameda.
Yo vengo a pedirles a los concejales que nos ayuden a tener ahí nuestro pedacito para seguir sembrando.
I'm asking all the council members, please let us keep our land so we can continue sowing, planting.
Este domingo tuvimos una fiesta y estuvo muy bonito. Hubo muchos niños, muchas personas grandes. Todo estuvo muy bonito. Queremos que nos ayuden para seguir ahí celebrando nuestras fiestas.
This last Sunday, we had a party. It was very nice. We had all the children that were playing, that were enjoying. We want to continue celebrating and having parties there. We ask you to come and join us, too.
Por favor, ayúdenos si pueden y pongan un poquito de atención en lo que nosotros les pedimos.
Please help us and put a little bit of attention in what we're asking.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much. I'll say.
Thank you very much. This concludes general public comment for today's meeting. At this time, let me recognize Councilmember Garcetti for our final presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you for accommodating the schedule. We're very proud today to be able to celebrate not just films in Los Angeles and throughout the world, but activism and the marriage of the two in the Artivist Film Festival. Today was declared by the mayor Artivist Day in the city of Los Angeles, and the Artivist Film Festival will be conducting its second year of films. There are some 70 films from 26 countries. Come up forward. And we have the, not only some of the organizers here, the founder, Diaki Diaz, who we'll hear from in a moment, but face familiar to many of you, James Cromwell, one of our most esteemed actors, who also is one of the honorees. The idea behind the Artivist Film Festival is that films can and do change people's lives, and that we can marry artistic expression with political and social change and the issues that matter most to us. There are four organizations and two individuals that are being honored at this year's festival. Mira Sorvino and James Cromwell are the two activists who happen also to be actors who are being honored in this year's festival, and four organizations, Global Green, Amnesty International, Farm Sanctuary, and Prevent Child Abuse America. The festival kicks off this evening at the Egyptian Theater and will be going on from April 20th to 24th here in the heart of Hollywood, in the heart of the city. And if folks want to know about the film festival and some of the films they can see, please go to the website of Artivist, which is www.artivist.us. And I just want to say briefly before turning the microphone over to Diaki and to hear something from James as well, that we're so proud to have this here in Los Angeles, because I think Los Angeles has a proud tradition, not only of being the home of filmmaking, where films were once born, but also being a home for activists, people who believe that they can change their neighborhoods, can change their cities, can change their country, and can change the world. James Cromwell certainly embodies that in his work on animal rights activism, somebody who has pointed out some of the extreme abuses that are in not only our country but throughout the world against animals. I would be there tonight myself if I weren't going up for Earth Day with Global Green, one of the honorees to the Arctic Circle, to look at some of the issues there with the depletion of our polar ice cap. But I hope you all give a rousing welcome and that some of you will be able to go to the Artivist Film Festival. I know there are tens of thousands of viewers on Channel 35 as well, and we encourage you to get out there and to see some of these films, because they will change your lives just as they have changed the lives of the filmmakers and the actors who are a part of it. So with that, please give a round of applause, and I'll show the proclamation here beautifully framed for Artivist Film Festival Day. Please give a round of applause, and Diaki Diaz, the founder and executive director, will say a few words. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, council, and thank you, Eric Garcetti, for giving us such a wonderful opening. I think you should be at the opening ceremonies and just be the host. So the purpose of the Artivist Film Festival is to raise awareness for international human rights, children's advocacy, animal rights, and environmental preservation through film and music, and it's crucial that we have a festival like this, especially in the heart of Hollywood, which is the entertainment capital of the world, that uses the power of film and the power of media to affect positive change. And on that note, at the completion of the festival, we have the Artivist Awards, which really honors and celebrates the contributions of artists that have dedicated their entire life to affecting positive change in our global community. And this morning, we have one of our wonderful honorees, Mr. James Cromwell, who is, where's Jamie? Mr. James Cromwell, who is a perfect example. I know, exactly, sort of a very big difference in height here, but we're so happy to have Jamie here today with us this morning, because in our heartfelt opinion, he is a pure example of an artist, an artist who has dedicated his entire life towards raising awareness for kindness for animals, kindness for the environment, kindness for human beings, and it's very important that we promote individuals and we support individuals and we hear their voices, who really are artists coming forward to speak on these issues. So I'd love to give a moment to Jamie to do what he does best, which is to be an actor and an artist, and to say, for example, his reason for being an activist on our planet, or whatever it else you would like to share.
Good morning. Thank you to the city of Los Angeles and this council for this award recognition of the contribution that activists and artists are making to this community to address some of the problems that otherwise would pass beneath the radar. All of these films are the result of an incredible amount of effort on the behalf of filmmakers and artists to bring these issues to the public. They often don't get seen, so this festival is one of the few places where these kind of films can make a difference to the people of Los Angeles and to the people of the world. Your recognition of this and your support is essential in order to get this message out, and I want to thank you all for this commendation. Thank you.
And thank you so much, James. Thank you. And also, we would like to introduce, we have two of our wonderful filmmakers from the festival today. We have Jenny Stein and James Lebec, who are here with us this morning, and they are the filmmakers of a film called Peaceable Kingdom that we're going to be showing on Thursday, which deals with animal kindness and advocacy for animals, and I'd like to just introduce them very quickly so they can at least say hello. And they are two of our filmmakers that are being presented at Artivist this year.
Well, we'd just like to thank the city of Los Angeles for giving such a warm welcome to this festival and for helping draw attention to the issues of violence and peace in our society. These are issues that affect us all, and bringing the arts into the circle of the discussion of how to make a more peaceful planet is one of the best ways we have of coming to that outcome as fast as possible. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. And finally, I would like to introduce our co-founders for the Artivist Film Festival and the Artivist Awards, Bettina Wolf and Christopher Rita Sell. They are the vice presidents of the organization and my wonderful co-founders, and we are, the name of our nonprofit organization is the Artivist Collective, and we are a charitable group here in Hollywood. And again, our purpose and our mission is to continue promoting global awareness and global consciousness through film, so we invite each and every one of you to become involved in the arts, become involved in film here in Hollywood, and in making sure that we use the power of media for positive and for positive contributions in our global community. And again, thank you, Eric, for inviting us this morning again. Thanks for having us. Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, and we really do encourage people to get out there. It's great to hear about it, but it's even better to experience these movies and to hear the stories of the activism, and I think people are well familiar in this horseshoe with the groups that are being honored and the good work that they're doing, not just globally, but right here in our own backyard. So congratulations to the Artivist Collective. Get out there to the film festival, and congratulations to all the award winners. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Mr. Labange.
I just wanted to rise to thank the artists for coming to City Hall. Thank the artists for putting their hands out and trying to get other artists or people interested in art, because art and humanities is what brings peace. It truly does, in a lot of ways. And if you see the involvement of any program, and I love the Olympic Games, it's one for great athletes, but at the same time, great arts, and that convergent causes good feeling for all people. But this little program that you have in Hollywood in the heart, and some of these very dedicated artists who are here and others, will make a difference and stimulate someone who we haven't even met yet, who will make a difference in the lives of others. So that's what it's all about, and I just can't thank Eric enough, because Eric, you always pushing it and including us, the council, and groups that are involved in things that we may have not thought about, and widening our box, so to speak, to make it a circle, because they always said the world's round. Okay, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And colleagues, that concludes our presentations, but at this time, it is my honor to introduce a special group of guests that are visiting City Hall today for their annual Government Day in the city of Los Angeles, the Valley Leadership Institute, class of 2005. Would you please stand up? I think a number of you have had an opportunity to, or have been invited to come and participate in the day-long visit to City Hall. Welcome leaders from throughout the San Fernando Valley. You're going to see this council in action. Returning now to our agenda, actually, colleagues, before taking up the next item on our agenda, we do have a special one that has been circulated. Let me ask the city attorney to speak to the findings.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Sunday, April 17th, LA Times deliveryman Alejo Ortiz Amador was fatally wounded during an apparent robbery attempt while Mr. Amador was working. The LAPD has requested council's assistance to immediately issue the reward offer for the capture of the suspect, who remains a continuing threat to the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Any members of the council wishing to speak on the findings? Saying none. Let's open the roll on the findings, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, special one is now before us on the motion itself. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, along with Ms. Perry, joined today because of a very serious incident that occurred on Sunday, April 17th, reported in the Tuesday, April 19th, LA Times, about the slain paper deliveryman, and that's Alejo Ortiz Amador, 56-years-old, fatally wounded in the 100 block of East 97th Street while performing his job. And just as, in context, he's a three-decade employee of the LA Times. His primary route was service stations, pharmacies, liquor stores, in which he delivered the newspaper, but in the early morning Sunday, the 56-year-old father of seven barely made it out of his vehicle and was shot in the face while performing his task. He was only two years away from what he considered retirement, and he leaves seven children, two of which are LA Times employees. I'd like to ask Ms. Perry to join and ask the family to come up, and also the Times representative.
Yes, if I could ask the family to please come forward and meet Mr. Parks at the middle aisle. And as they're approaching, Mr. Parks and I wanted you to meet them to understand how devastating an impact this has been to the family and the community and to their employer. I want to introduce to you, and I'll let his daughter take over after, Rosio Amador, Alma Sofia Velazquez, Juana Maria Amador, and Mrs. Velazquez is his wife, Frederico Amador, son, Elida Amador, another daughter, and the gentleman from the Times can introduce himself after his daughter speaks.
First of all, I want to thank everybody for taking their time to listen out, and the reason that we're here is because there's somebody that did something that wasn't supposed to be done, especially to my father, and we're asking for justice, and we don't want this person to be out there kidding other people. And we have all my family. We thank everybody, people that we don't even know, take their time to help us out, and I just want to say thank you, and we appreciate all of this.
The LA Times representative is here to also talk about their addition to the LA City reward, and that the Times is also presenting the reward.
Good morning. My name is Randy Jones. I'm representing the Los Angeles Times this morning. On Monday, the Los Angeles Times announced a $25,000 award to support LAPD's homicide investigation into this matter. Also, we are here to support Mr. Amador's family and to encourage everyone to support LAPD's effort to bring his killer to justice. Thank you.
And for those that are listening to Channel 35, we'd ask anyone with information to call Southeast Detectives, 213-972-7816, and on behalf of myself and Jan Perry, we ask for unanimous vote on this $50,000 reward.
Mr. Labange.
Members, and to the Amador family, how horrible it is for you, your father, a father of a big, loving family, tragically taken away from you by this violence, and it hurts you tremendously as it hurts us all in this city, and for those who work overnight and those for the years that he worked for the Times, because when I read the story, I thought about the fellow who comes through our neighborhood, and those people who work overnight, and then somebody comes and takes their life, a horrible, horrible incident. I'd just like to ask members, Mr. President, that we all stand for a moment for Mr. Amador and pause for a moment, because the family is here at this time, because they may not be here at the end of our meeting, but I think it's important to recognize this tragedy, and this tragedy I know we all feel for, but we all should constantly remember. And every day when we pick up our paper at the door, we think of him and others who unfortunately were victims of a senseless act. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other members of the council wishing to make remarks at this time? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Let's send that item forthwith, please. Also, before returning to the items called special, I understand Mr. Weisman's reconsideration of items 19 through 24, the ordinances from today's agenda for purposes of a 12 vote. Mr. Veregos has seconds. Let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those items are back before us, and if there's no further discussion, please reopen the roll on items 19 through 24, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number two was called special, and that's a public hearing item for a card from the public.
Item number two now before us, and the council calls forward Amy McKenzie and Maria Hall to address the council on this item.
My name is Maria Hall. I have recently been retained by Belmont Art Park United and Amy McKenzie. Today, we are requesting a continuance of this item because apparently letters were not sent out, and the only posting we could find about this meeting was this on the street, which says Notice of Street Vacation. This was found by one of my clients on Friday morning, last Friday morning, about today's meeting, and as you can see, this is in English. The area is predominantly Spanish speakers, so if there is a way that we could continue this item so that we could maybe go out and outreach into the community, provide more translation... translation, and explain the issue, we would be happy to work with city council, so that people would know about this issue. I know that public easement is extremely important to them, and we've been talking to a few people, and they were not able to come today on this short notice, as of Friday morning, because they have to request time off from work and arrange for childcare, which is very expensive for them. So we respectfully ask for a continuance, and I appreciate your consideration.
Is she going to speak as well?
Hi, my name is Amy McKenzie. I live at 122 Glendale Boulevard, Los Angeles, 90026. I would like to request a continuance today on this item. I do not believe there was adequate public notice. I also believe that there are many people who would like to speak on this issue, but were not given enough notice of the public hearing. Also, time is not of the essence in this issue, and will not hold up the development. And I don't believe there's anyone here to speak in opposition of the continuance. Please take that into consideration. And I believe this item is important, because the public will be affected by, potentially by the loss of right of way. Belmont Art Park United still hopes to forge good neighbor agreements with the developer, and gaining public access to the historic monuments is one of our goals. So I would like to have this taken into consideration when considering the vacation of this alley. Thank you.
This concludes public comment on this item. Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, this is a project that has been evolving for the past year or so. We announced and had this process begin for the alleviation. A hearing was held in March. This project is not the Belmont Tunnel site, which has invoked a lot of emotions and frustrations for many in the community. At the same time, we are addressing a dire need of housing. This is an 85-unit, 100% affordable housing project in the Central City West area, an area that is in dire need of housing. We are also in a time crunch. We have tax credits, a TCAT deadline of May 5th. So our ability to provide housing for this area is critical. Hearings have been held. We essentially granted a project permit at the end of last year, and at that time, it was not appealed. So again, I ask my colleagues that we continue focusing on these kinds of issues that talk about putting a roof over the heads of the folks who can afford at the least, and this is one of the rare occasions where we have a facility that's 100% affordable. Developers will continue to work with the community, as my office has been, and we're trying to do what we can to appeal to all interests. But we do need to have this move forward, and I appreciate your support with an eye vote.
Are there council members wishing to speak on this item? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item, please.
Item number 12, called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have someone here on the matter, from staff. Lanark Park Pool, Rexon Park.
Mr. Mukri. Mr. Mukri.
Mr. Labange, can you release Mr. Mukri to come forward? Thank you. Mr. Mukri, you're here on the pool? Lanark Park Pool? Or is there another staff member here? Don't be shy, folks. If you're here from the department, we have some questions. I first want to thank the Housing Community Economic Development Committee for passing this and bringing it on to council. I have some questions regarding the timeframe. This community in Canoga Park has been without a swimming pool since 2001, when the pool was shut down. And looking at the information we've received, we're talking a year for design, and then another year for construction, and expected to complete in 2007. Now, we just opened up a police station, 55,000-square-foot police station, multiple-story, with a parking structure and a helipad in the West San Fernando Valley in less time than that. And I'm trying to figure out how we can do that, and we're going to take what is an abandoned pool, remove that, and put in a pool for the community in the existing Lanark Park in the southwest San Fernando Valley. When I look at the design, which is supposed to start in May of 2005, and then construction June 2006, which is 13 months, designed to include investigations, meetings, drawings, presentations, approval from agencies, review of drawings, plan check, securing permits, that's just the design aspect. And I'm questioning why it's going to take so long, and I appreciate we're going to bring this pool back to this community that's been without a pool with 100-plus-degree temperatures in the San Fernando Valley. Why is it going to take so long when we're taking something out that's already there and putting something in? What is the delay of the $1.783 million project? The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman Zine.
Morning.
My name is Deborah Weintraub. I'm the deputy city engineer. I'm also a licensed architect. Let me explain a little bit about our schedule. We've actually compressed, and we really appreciate that the community needs this facility as soon as possible. And in anticipation of the additional funding being added to the project, we've already have a design firm lined up, ready to go. We went through the city process, using our on-call list, issuing a task order request, and negotiating the contract. Once we have Board of Public Works approval, we're ready to start. So we have tried to accelerate the project.
I also want to acknowledge your general manager, Mr. Mukri, who's been very helpful with the department, because I know we were short of funds, and we were able to receive funds from the mayor's office and accumulation of other sources to get the $1.7 million to make it happen. The frustration I have is that this community's been without it since 2001, and to wait till 2007 in this heat of the San Fernando Valley, which we're going to see, which we traditionally see, and these young people have no place to go. This is not like an area that has a lot of swimming pools and backyards. It's a lot of apartments, a lot of young families, a lot of children. And how do we push that cart?
We will try and do it as expeditiously as possible. We don't intend to drag the process out. We've actually asked the architects to produce their designs, to go through all the review and approval processes, including our client agency, Rexon Parks, public meetings, building and safety in nine months. We've asked them to do the design in nine months. We then are leaving three months for our public bid and award process, which is pretty standard time period, and that leaves one month for contract execution and any unforeseen delays that might come up in discussion with the community or with our client agency. So we feel it's a fairly aggressive schedule. Nine months to produce the construction documents and do all of the community meetings, we feel is fairly aggressive. Again, our goal is not to delay the project.
What kind of community meetings do we have, or what community meetings are necessary when we're replacing a pool in an existing city park? I must add that it's a city park that's had a lot of crime problems in the past that have been eradicated, but we're not trying to take pristine land and build a park and put a swimming pool and all of the records facilities. We already have that there. We're taking what is, since 2001, not working, out of that hole, and I assume we're going to put the new pool in the same hole. What kind of input do we need from the community when we're going to give them something that was already there, and we're going to bring it up to a standard where they can enjoy it? I don't understand that part of it.
Yeah, Councilman John Mukri, general manager, these will be our normal community meetings that we would have when we bring out a new facility. We need to know, understand their programming aspects of it. We want to know their design, features that they want, et cetera, et cetera, so that we can input this to the architect. I don't expect, as you do, that it will take much time with the community. We've already been out with that community numerous occasions, at Lanark Pool, explaining the delays in the funding issues. I'm convinced that we can do that a little quicker than what we have in the plan, but let us meet with the community. They're my clients, they're my constituents, and I'm sure that they'll want us to expedite this.
And I will offer the assistance of my office and the neighborhood councils in that particular area, and whatever we need to move this forward as quickly as possible, since they have been very patient over the years. And I know that Councilmember Smith's had a similar situation in his district, where the pool, I think it was because of the earthquake in his area, in this particular area, it's not the earthquake, it's sinking and falling apart. But these communities that look toward the city to say, "Give us something that we already had," and all of the loopholes and the red tape and the bureaucracy, and they say, "We just want a swimming pool so our children can go swimming." We will assist in any way possible to expedite that, because I know we're not going to build a swim park. What we're going to do is reestablish the swimming pool for that community. And then the other questions regarding some of the delays, that we hope there won't be any delays, since funding has now been secured, and we've been working on this since 2001, just to get the funding, and it's now 2005. And then the frustration saying, "Now, we wait till 2007," that seems an incredibly long time. And I know there's process that we have to go through, plan check, and those other issues, maybe we can expedite through the city process.
We'll do our best to expedite it. And you have been very helpful all along.
I'm sorry, who's been helpful?
Your office. We've worked very closely with your office.
Well, I know that Brian Perry from our legislative team, and the district folks, and the representatives from that area have been going through, and frustration at some point, how do we end up acquiring all the dollars it's going to take to get this happen? And then once we get that, it's like, by the way, it's going to take till 2007. That's when I said, "We've got to somehow speed up the schedule." So we will offer our assistance, establishing community meetings, whatever we need to do. Like I say, we did that police station in West Valley, we got the community involved, we had a couple meetings with them, with the officers, with detectives, and that's going to open for business on May 1st.
You know, Councilmen, all due respect, that police station was a set of plans that were just site-altered. They existed already. We were copying another police station when we built that one.
But I would assume that we would have plans for a swimming pool.
This will be plans done specifically for this complex. It has its own set of issues. In addition to the pool, we're going to renovate the pool house. We need to restripe the parking lot, we need to make the whole facility ADA compliant. There will be a new fence. It will be plans produced specifically for this pool.
No, I understand. I mean, upgrading the park is great. Let's get the kids in the water, and then we can follow through with the other issues.
If I might just add, this is one of 59 swimming pools in the city. We put this one on the top of our list, as you know.
I appreciate that.
We've secured the funding, but I'm just going to make a plea to all council districts, we have these problems throughout the city. Our pools need a lot of work.
I agree. And when you have lower economic areas with a lot of apartments, a lot of young families with a lot of children, and they look for that relief during the summer months, they don't have the transportation to go to other pools. In that area, other than that, and Reseda, which I think we're going through renovation now at Reseda Park with the swimming pool and the swim house, the bathhouse.
Bathhouse, yeah.
And both of those areas have a tremendous amount of young folks, young children, and if we can keep on the swimming pool during the summertime, we can keep them off the streets and get in trouble. So I think we'll all benefit from that.
Let Deborah and I work on the timeline. I know we can get the community involvement. The long pole in the tent was the funding, as you're aware. We've now come to the conclusion, we have the funds available, we're going to move smartly on it, and I know Deborah is committed to expedite this as much as possible.
And I will offer, again, my assistance of my office to help in a partnership to make that happen, and I think Councilmember Smith's pool's moving forward too. So the valley, getting two new police stations and two new swimming pools, which will be nice for the residents of San Fernando Valley.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members of the council wishing to speak on this item? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 29 was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, sir. We've gotten those questions answered. We'd go on then.
Okay, so we can move forward with the vote, colleagues, in item 29. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, colleagues, since item 29 and 44 were interrelated, I've been advised by the city attorney that we can now receive and file item 44 without objections, so ordered. And let's also send item 29 forthwith, please. Madam Clerk, next item.
Next item is item number 36, and that was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to highlight that back in February 2004, one of the eighth district residents, Derek Norwood, was a victim of a hit-and-run, had such severe injuries that he was a paraplegic from his neck down, paralyzed. This occurred in the intersection of 46 and St. Andrews. So today, we're renewing our previous $50,000 reward motion and ask anyone that has information that could help South Traffic Division solve this major crime, that they call 213-485-7336.
Thank you very much. Any further comment, questions, colleagues? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number 39, called special by Councilmember Perry, and there is a substitute motion that has been distributed.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As I mentioned, it's a technical correction, doesn't affect the substance of the issue, was called to my attention by the chief legislative analyst office, so that we can go ahead and make sure that a special event took place there.
Okay. Any objection, colleagues? If not, let's open the roll on the substitute motion, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's see, housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Zine requests to be excused May 10th to arrive at 11:00 a.m. for city business that meets council policy.
Mr. Zine is excused.
And Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused Friday, June 10th, for city business that also meets council policy.
Mr. Reyes is excused.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Okay, in conformance with California law, the council will now adjourn into closed session. Sergeants, please clear the chambers.
Madam Clerk, next matter before us, please.
The item before council is item number 42, and that's settlement in the case of a state of Norma Vitas versus City et al., and that's in the amount of $250,000.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
And that clears the desk.
Colleagues, it's the end of our agenda today. Do we have any announcements? Mr. Zine.
We have an announcement at the center aisle. We have a birthday boy today.
We have a great honor of Herman Landry, who's celebrating his birthday today, and I think our sergeant of arms deserves our credit, because he helps us all the time, and we certainly want to say happy birthday, Herman Landry. Thank you very much.
Happy birthday, Herman Landry.
Working on his birthday.
37 years, LAPD.
I thought it was 37 years old.
Oh, no. He'll play the Beatles tune next year.
Other announcements? Mr. Reyes.
I just wanted to share with my colleagues and those listening that the Dodgers are doing great. They're 11-2, beginning of the season, but let's enjoy it while we can, and hopefully they'll be there at the end of the season. Just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Best record in Major League Baseball, best start since 1981. Other announcements? Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just announce that we're making a renewal of our previous motion today, that you probably have a copy of it regarding the Voters' Right Act. And this is something that has really been percolating out in the community, where people actually believe with the expiration in 2007, that there, certain groups of people will not be allowed to vote. And so although there's certain mandates in the current act, it's important for the general public to know that no one is going to be disallowed to vote, but there is a comfort level in renewing the Voting Rights Act, and it's the second time we put this motion forward. And also, as a general awareness, that later this year, the Rainbow Push Coalition is going to have the major event in Washington commemorating the 40
in Washington commemorating the 40th anniversary of the Voting Rights Act.
Mr. Rivera-Gosa.
I am co-authoring that motion, and I just wanted to also indicate my support. Folks, when you look at the composition of this council today, the composition of this council looks like it does because there's a Voting Rights Act. Because America, in its wisdom, our Congress, opened up the country to its founding principles of equality and of opportunity. It was a monumental initiative that had an impact all across the country. As you know, I'm a former Speaker of the California State Assembly, and without a Voting Rights Act, that never would have happened. And the idea that we would not reaffirm our support for that is untenable. I believe in a society that's benefited so much from the diversity that is America. And so I want to add my voice to the voice of Rainbow Push and, of course, Councilmember Parks, to say that this council must and should support the reaffirmation and reenactment, or the extension, rather, of the Voting Rights Act.
Other announcements? Announcements? Do you have adjourning motions today? Please rise. Mr. Carriganus.
Thank you very much, Council President. It's with great sadness that I announce the adjourning motion of Elizabeth Leon Novella, who was born on November 17, 1967. Circumstances of her death were that she was killed by a careless act of a suicide attempter, a man named Mr. Carter, who slammed his SUV into Elizabeth, crushing her against another vehicle as she walked to her car. It was just a random, random incident where it took her life. Her notable attributes are that she was raised in the San Fernando Valley, graduated from Polytechnic High School in Sun Valley, and attended the Fashion Institute of Design and Merchandising in Los Angeles, majoring in interior design. Elizabeth was a free-spirited, loving and giving person to her family and friends. She enjoyed skiing, rock climbing. Having no children of her own, she decided to dedicate much of her time to her 14 nieces and nephews, who refer to her as mommy number two. Her love for all creatures included taking her many children to the wildlife waystation in Little Tahanga and to learn about wild animals that are abandoned and teaching young people not to abuse them and to care for them. She is survived by her parents, Agustín and Sez- Nove- Noverola, her six brothers and sisters, and their spouses, and her 14 nieces and nephews.
Other tributes? Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two tributes today. Ms. Jimmy G. Jarrett, resident of the city of Los Angeles since 1940, born February 18, 1919. Retired from Rockwell International in 1976 after 35 years of service. She passed away at the age of 86 on Sunday, April 17. Funeral services will be held at Greater Ebenezer on Saturday, April 23 at 10:00 a.m. Also, sadness is that we adjourn in memory of Katana Bunny Brown, born Easter Sunday, May 29, March 29, 1964. And then passed away on March 29, 2005, which was her 41st birthday. She grew up in Inglewood, most recently lived in Hawthorne. Graduated St. Mary's Academy, attended Cal State Long Beach, and worked for the U.S. Postal Service for 17 years. She was greatly loved by her children and her son and family members. Funeral service faithful Central Bible Church on Thursday, April 7, 2005. She's survived by her father, Ernest, and son Lawrence.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, Mr. Parks and I wanted to adjourn in memory of Mr. Alejo Amador Ortiz, who was viciously murdered on April 17. He was a 56-year-old family man who worked and delivered papers for the Los Angeles Times for nearly 30 years, father of seven, and was married to his wife Alma for 38 years, and funeral services are pending.
All members. Mr. Rivera-Gosa.
Yes, as President Members, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Luz Alba Sanchez, the mother of a staffer of mine, Avigail Sanchez. Luz Alba Sanchez was born on July 25, 1950, in Etzatlan Jalisco to David Rodriguez and Clotilde Lopez. Her father was an artisan and her mother an entrepreneur. Family moved to Tijuana, Baja California when she was a toddler. Father was a bracero, came to work in California. They continued to live in Tijuana. During her time in Tijuana, she met Lázaro Ricardo Sanchez, who she married in 1974. She dubbed their first meeting "Lost luggage, found husband." They met while Luz and her twin sister were on a trip and the bus company lost Luz's luggage. Being a woman who never accepted defeat, she demanded that the bus company find her luggage. She was directed to Mr. Sanchez. She went in looking for luggage and went out with a first date. She lost her luggage but found love. Couple later moved to Los Angeles where they had two daughters, Avigail Elizabeth Sanchez and Lucy Inés Sanchez. They later adopted Elsa Herrera, daughter of Luz's older sister, who lost her battle with breast cancer. Luz, as you know, means light, and she was full of light and life and had an incredibly positive nature. She greeted and welcomed everyone with a smile, a hug, and a kiss, even if she only met them for the first time. She was a woman who took pride in her work, an assistant librarian at Emerson Elementary School in Compton. She left a legacy of dedicated service, working with young students and low-income parents. She cared about community, education, and opportunities for all. She began her battle with breast cancer in March of 2004, took over her body but never her spirit. She lost that battle on April 7, 2005. We adjourn in her memory.
Other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.